Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Perry. It is May 1st, 2023, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. So we'll start with a roll call, please.
Caldarn.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
White.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Worthy.
Here. All right, I play a corn. Throwing things around the other way. So let's start a meeting with an invocation, which we invited Reverend Joshua Bell to offer that for us.
Let's pray. We come to you in thankfulness for the many years of service given by our friend and colleague who is retiring. We thank you for the long-term contributions they have made in the execution of daily tasks and their loyalty to our organization and the sharing of their experience and wisdom with others. We are appreciative of their hard work and dedication. They have adapted to many changes over the years and have made sacrifices of their personal time when the job demanded it. They've been a mentor and friend to their fellow employees and have worked faithfully despite their own personal obligations, joys, and challenges. We pray your continued blessings on our city council, our mayor, and all of our city employees. We ask that you be with them, that your presence be with them as we continue to explore new horizons. May they be blessed with strong networks of friends and family to enjoy the journey that lies ahead. It's in this aspect that we ask that you give us receptive hearts and minds for the wisdom and many recipients to receive our love and care. Here we end our prayer with thankful for what we have been and grateful for what is yet to be. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Bell. So let's start with item one, the consent agenda. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of April 17th, 2023.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Caldarn.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. And on to item B. We have received the Perry Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Report. You can find in your packet.
Send out.
Send out.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Caldarn.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Item two, items removed from the consent agenda for discussion. We'll continue on to item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda. Seeing that as well. All right, item five, proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. I know with this we do have a presentation. We'd like to invite our fire chief, Russ Brand.
So putting pressure on him now.
Sure, sure. Thank you. I just wanted to take an opportunity tonight to thank the council for giving us the opportunity to thank Tim Moxley. Twenty years of his adult life and that he has given unselfishly to this community and the areas surrounding Perry. Tim and I have been really good friends for a long time, and tonight's a little tougher than I thought it would be. But Tim, if I get you and your family to come up real quick. Tim served with us, he started April 15th of 2003. Hundreds of hours in training and hours that we couldn't count if we look back and calculate all the times that he had spent sacrificing his personal time and family time and just for calls and responding to emergencies for fire emeralds. We do have a plaque to present to Tim for 20 years. Thanks, bro. Appreciate it. Additionally, we will present Tim with his structured helmet that he wore while on duty. I'm glad that his youngest son, or middle son, Cade, his youngest one, we haven't pulled in yet, but Cade was a volunteer with us for a while before he got on at Moore Fire Department. And Tim's all of a sudden, Hayden, spent some time with us full-time before he got on at the Village Fire Department in the Oklahoma City Metro area. So full family of firefighters. Tim, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, hold on just a second.
Mayor would like to read something.
Yep, I'd like to read this out for everybody. So this proclamation, whereas on April 15th, 2003, Tim Moxley made the decision to selflessly dedicate his time and talent to the citizens of our community as a volunteer firefighter. Whereas over the past 20 years, Tim Moxley committed hundreds of hours of his personal life to acquire fire and medical certifications, qualifications, training, and continuing education. Whereas Tim Moxley volunteered to sacrifice immeasurable hours, countless family events, and personal time responding to fire and medical emergencies. Whereas Tim Moxley volunteered additional time to serve the City of Perry as a member of the city council from April 15th, 2013, and until September 1st, 2015. Whereas Tim Moxley also worked at the Perry BMAC Baseball Complex from March 1st, 2016, and until October 31st, 2020, as a groundskeeper. Whereas after 20 years in the Perry Volunteer Fire Department, Tim Moxley has submitted his retirement for the fire service. Whereas Tim Moxley, with his wife Charity and their children, Hayden, Cade, Holden, and Grace, display all the best characteristics of an Oklahoman with his commitment to his family and his town. Now, therefore, I, Lawrence Worthy, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Perry and the state of Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2023, as Tim Moxley Volunteer Firefighter Day.
I will say, it's been an honor to serve this community. I've served it on the council. I've served it at BMAC, and I've also served it with the fire department. But I'm gonna tell you, it's just been an honor. I feel Russell is just like my best friend, always has been. You've got the greatest fire chief in Oklahoma right here in Perry, Oklahoma. I can tell you that right now. So thank y'all very much for everything. I appreciate everything.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, is there anything else to be brought? Okay. So we'll continue on to item six, which is the election of a vice mayor by majority vote for city council per city charter. And so on the first very least scheduled council meeting of May, each odd number of year, we're to select and submit a vice mayor for the next two years.
Nominate Jared Caldarn to continue as a last man.
All right, Kevin. Roll call, please.
Caldarn.
Yes?
Yes.
Good choice.
Bond.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. All right, thank you, everyone. So on to item number seven, city manager report. Larry.
Thank you, sir. Saturday, April 22nd, was our citywide cleanup day where folks were allowed to come in to the city, to the street department and bring their items that they were wanting to get rid of. We had staff there and volunteers to help unload the trailers, put them in dumpsters, and those were taken to the transfer station. The street department also had crew out on that same Saturday morning, visiting 15 residents who said they needed a little extra help with larger items, washing machines or grills or whatever it may be. So we had those folks out. 22nd was also Earth Day, so we did a period recycling. We had 39 guests come, still bringing lots of cardboard and lots of volume. That's good, bringing that on. The day before, on Friday, the 21st, the city, some of the city staff participated in the main streets, adopt a flowerbed program. So we adopted three flowerbeds right there by City Hall and then across the street where the original Zimmer lives. Then the Perry Ladies Tuesday Afternoon Club also adopted three flowerbeds at Seventh and Delaware. So things are looking up, especially now with the rain. We want to thank also Red Earth Designs, they supplied one of the signs. Also, we're participants on affiliated level with Keep Oklahoma Beautiful. They provided another banner, a different banner, gloves and vests and t-shirts. So we appreciate everybody's help there. Our next semi-annual cleanup will be sometime in October. Not too sure about the date, so look for that. The waterline replacement project was moving along well until we had the rain, and I thought, really, they're probably gonna shut down from Wednesday on. But come Friday morning, as I was coming into City Hall, they were out there doing their thing. So we're appreciative of that. This past weekend, we were able to certify five new lifeguards. So for the 2023 season, which will start on Memorial Day, from noon to 6:00, and then following, going after that, every week thereafter, it will be open Tuesday through Saturday, same hours. So now with the five that we've got certified and also the five that were coming back from last year that are already certified, so we have 10 to help Perry groom have a really good year for the Perry Municipal Pool. Council, any questions or anything?
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item eight, which is our quarterly investment report as of March 31st, 2023.
This is something that I'd done previously in a municipality. And so recently, we had a conversation about interest rates and different kind of rates for CDs and other investments. I pulled this out of something that we've done in the past. In another, I can't even talk to that, sorry. In another municipality that we had served, it was the quarterly report. We'd like to do that going forward. So as you see on the schedule, you'll see the CD number, the balance, the interest rate, the maturity date, the term, and also down below, you'll see where the three months, six months, and 12-month rate are. And Mayor is here to help us with any questions you may have. So we like to do this on a quarterly basis. If you want it monthly, we'll do it monthly. But we think that quarterly is probably the best way to start.
What is library RIF?
It is a library CD that's set back for the reading.
Reading is fundamental.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very good.
I thought I went that way.
Yes.
So specifically, library.
Yes, library restricted. And I'm sure you all read the background. When I did, I kind of thought you was talking, thought you were talking about my college dating. There was some chasing and some pushback and a little pulling of support. But once you got to the actual.
That's a little bit more information. But we're interested.
That was very descriptive. But just as a point, this is a detail of the summary that you already see on your cash schedule. On your cash schedule, you're seeing that as a lump sum amount. And so this just breaks out.
What banks are these with? Are they from here in Perry?
Yes, they're all in.
Just kind of mixed around?
They are all in Perry institutions, either Exchange or First.
First Bank.
Yep.
And I'm assuming the library RIF is part of our book, the starred accounts, two that are starred.
Both are library related. I don't know that they're both RIF, but they're both library.
Any other questions on that? Seeing none. Going to item nine. Consider a proposal for medical equipment planning and integration services for Stillwater Medical Center Perry for emergency hospital remodel. Now, with this, we will most likely have to have a motion to move this to another meeting because the numbers have changed. And so to update the agenda and to have the correct numbers, we'll need to do that. But are there any questions on this?
Did the numbers actually change, or was it just the total?
It was the total that changed. It was added up incorrectly. On the agenda, it reflects the.
I would say it was a script of error.
Yeah.
Because you see the totals there.
Yeah. In the agenda, we have the total of $47,830, and the actual total is $7,300. Seven hundred.
Is this something that would go out for a request for proposal or anything? Or is there, I mean, are there other companies that do this?
Yes. Yes, and it could. And it could. Your limit in your code is over $100,000, but you can go out for RFP for really any professional service. This is the company which Stillwater Medical Center recommended. And I spoke to Steve Taylor about it, and he said, yeah, we think they did a good job. It's just that the number in the contract was this $47,830, and then they, I mean, they had added it up wrong. And so it was put on the agenda wrong.
So is the real total, this $737?
Yes. Yes. But we don't have the right amount of appropriation on the agenda, and I just think it's better to, you know, it's not a real emergency right now. I mean, we're still working on the plans. If you wanted to go out for proposals, you could do that. This is what SMC recommends to us. And they use them kind of exclusively at their campus. So.
Stephen Taylor did mention that in the past, this particular project has been part of the architect's fee. However, lately, they think that it's best to pull this out and let Stillwater work directly with the vendor instead of Stillwater going to the architect who goes to the vendor. He comes back with the answer to come back this way. So it helps with the pricing, and it's certainly more efficient, absolutely. And I did ask him on page, let's see, one, two, pages one, two, and three, you've got basically two pages of options and scope of work. I asked him, what in addition to the scope of work that's on the optional side will we really need? And would there be something that we would want? And he says, in his past experience, the scope of work, the proposed part, is probably the best. That's all they'll need. Because when you look at the options, there's a whole lot of stuff there. So he feels comfortable that just the scope of work with the checkmarks under proposed would be sufficient.
So this company doesn't get any benefits procurement pricing-wise going through this company here?
I couldn't answer that.
And to clarify, this, all this equipment will be owned by the city, the hospital?
Yes. And will be financed as part of the transaction.
Well, what I understood when I read it is that this is not for the equipment, it's just for the planning of the equipment.
That is correct. It's for the planning of the equipment, the placement of equipment, furniture, you know, equipment, you know, all of it, how it's set out in the, and how it's provided for in the building.
Which I really think is probably the best way to go about it, since we're gonna have a smaller footprint. You know, you're not having a whole bunch of space. You're cutting it in half, basically, and having a much smaller footprint. So it's important that we know where things go and have the most efficient place for them to go.
I had to make sure we have all the proper infrastructure to go through.
Some of these things will still have to go out for bid, won't they?
The construction manager will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So even if this company could get a special pricing, that would not.
We're still gonna, we're still gonna go out for, certainly. Now, you know, the machines that, you know, if it's not fixed, I mean, there's no requirement to go out for bid unless it's fixed. They're a part of the relity. There's not either on the authority side now. If you remember, the legislature threw that provision out. So you wouldn't necessarily have to. And then under our own ordinance, we could waive it. So, but some of this will be subject to state pricing. And, you know, the construction manager may put it out for bid to try to get, try to get the best pricing. But, you know, I mean, the best thing is, you know, the best comparison is when you do your kitchen. You need to get a kitchen planner so that the, you know, your sink is here, you're, you know, I don't do dishes or cook, you know, but, you know, your spoons, your forks, your, all of that flows when you're, when you're in the kitchen. And that's kind of important because if you're turning around, once again, I don't cook. But, but I have paid for kitchens, you know, and I do know that it's important for it to, for it to work for the person that's gonna work there. And of course, how much more important is it for a hospital, you know?
Motion table. Before we get to acquired information.
Okay. Your roll call, please.
Caldarn.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Thank you. On to item 10. Consider renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024.
You know, this, this question is, you know, are we gonna go out for bid or are we gonna accept their, their quote? If you go out for bid, then you lose their reduced quote because, I mean, they want you to renew. I think as you saw, their original renewal price was 8.86. To the extent that we don't go out and quote it, the renewal has only gone up by 5%, which is really a very moderate, a very small increase for health insurance nowadays. Now, our medical history is really pretty good. We met with our broker on insurance. There are a few options. I think Aetna, not as good. United Healthcare, we used to have it, and it was pretty good. The reason we left it is that it was priced too high. And then there is an OML, kind of a, an own risk with some reinsurance that some folks are going through. There's a, there's a gold plan and a platinum plan. The platinum plan is comparable. It's slightly less than this, but the experience that the employees have had in an own risk is, is less than satisfactory. The employees, and we met with the unions, we didn't meet with non-union, but the unions were very, very satisfied with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Which the problem is, is Stillwater's gonna get a contract with them. We do know that that is extended until the end of the year. But the only downside from our broker is that, is that if in fact we decided, or you decided, you know, they, they don't reach a contract, and in December, you know, we do decide to go with someone else, because quite frankly, if they don't reach a contract, we do feel that that's certainly something we're gonna put in front of you, probably a recommendation to change. The real difference will be, all that will really occur is just two enrollment periods. And that was okay with the union employees and some of the other employees. Two enrollment periods wasn't a bad thing. From the broker's position, it wouldn't really change the quotations that would come unless something happened big time to our history. And since our deductibles are based on the calendar year, if we did change, then it would just start a new, you know, calendar year deductible. So even that's not a problem. It also tells Stillwater that we want them to, to work this thing out. You know, kind of, it kind of does that. I don't know that that makes a difference or not, but it does say. say that. I do know that in another community that has this, I spoke to their broker today, and they're going to make the same recommendation to their, to their community, and that is to renew with Blue Cross Blue Shield, because it's just better for the employee. Now, it's not going to be better if you're out of network, you know, and we recognize that. So this decision really is, do you want to see quotes? If you do, we lose this five percent. I suppose it will be eight point eight six percent, and then you could take a look at the other quotes. So that's really what's being put in front of you.
I'd certainly feel better about it if I knew Stillwater Medical Center was going to contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I don't see how they can afford not to, with all the people in surrounding areas that have that. But I think, I've always had Blue Cross Blue Shield all my adult life, and I've always really liked it. But it's always paid well, and never had any problems with it. Weren't they supposed to make a contract by May first?
Yes, but they didn't. But they're, Blue Cross Blue Shield and Stillwater are going to honor it through the end of the year. And so what we're talking about is renewing for the year, but if we need to change, change in December, we have two enrollment periods, so. It's not perfect. It's definitely imperfect, okay? But, but given the cards were dealt, the thought was, this is probably the best decision at this point. Meredith, do you have?
Oh, I think a burden. The hand is worth two in the bush. What's that saying? So unknown five percent compared to what's going to be out there potentially, plus the idea that we've got existing coverage through December, where we know it's going to be accepted. And then if in December they choose not to, and Stillwater chooses not to contract or negotiate whatever, whatever term you want to put around that, at that point, we look at our options, but...
As you know, when you change, there's disruption.
Yes.
There'll be some drugs that, no, we're not going to pay for this, and it's going to take you, you know, a period of time to get it back, or not get it back, or, or all that. And that is what the employees are not wanting to go through right now, particularly when the deductible was a calendar deductible and not a, and not a fiscal year deductible. I mean, that's what they've told us.
The known five percent, do you recall what it was last year, or, I remember one year it was a possibility of twenty-two to start out with.
Exactly. And it went down to thirteen, I think.
Yeah.
No, but I can, I can attempt to look back at budgets.
Didn't?
I think...
One year it didn't go up at all.
Two years.
Yeah, it didn't go up for two years.
But I don't remember if that was last year.
I don't remember if that's the last year, but, I mean, that's one of the good things about Blue Cross Blue Shield. We haven't seen these, these huge...
It's been favorable for...
Yeah, it's, it's been good for us and, and for the employees.
I think the feedback is the employees like it.
And five sounds...
They don't hear any complaints.
I'd rather have two, but five sounds...
Of course, the draft that I had on my email doesn't have the memo on it, which is very detailed out.
So if we go out and look for, do a check for other places, they're saying that the increase will be the eight point eight six, but if we say, "Okay, we'll stay with you without looking somewhere else," the increase will only be five percent.
That's correct.
So what is that, three point eight six percent? How much is that? Is that why I have the calculator here?
We knew you were going to ask that.
We have that...
So that the annual premium civilian, so three percent of the...
Yeah, we have the sheet.
So that would be...
It's the second column.
Second columns would be with the...
That's the renewal, with the, with the eight point six.
I wasn't in this meeting, but was that with the eight?
Well, it has an eight point eight six.
Yes.
Looks to me like it's about, you know, four thousand a month difference. So, times twelve, forty-eight thousand dollars. I mean, if, if the monthly is ninety-eight thousand, that's close to a hundred. The difference is, you know, close to four points. I mean, that's about four thousand, right? About four thousand a month, times twelve, forty-eight thousand dollars. That's, that's my farmer math that I would apply to it. Yeah. Which is a position.
Right. Yeah, so the five percent increase would take it up by fifty-four thousand.
And this, of course, is another decision that you don't have to make today. I mean, if you didn't, if you didn't want to make it today, you can continue this. It's not a must decision today, so...
We also won't have the answer that I think everybody wants before we have to write this decision.
Unless by some miracle, they sign a contract in the next two weeks.
I know. My input, just from the HR side and employees talking about it, disruption right now with the deductible part.
Right.
People want to stay with Blue Cross. People keep coming, "Oh, are you really going to lose it?" Not yet. Hang on. But most people are worried about this deductible side of things, because I know there is one person with a surgery, excuse me, planned, and her best benefit is, she knows she's met that deductible. And when we switched, the last time somebody dealt with that, it was a big mess before they got it figured out. But, so people want to stay with Blue Cross if we can. But, of course, they also want to stay in network. That's just from the employee side of things.
So do we wait until the last minute to see if anything changes, and then decide? Do we think there's any chance of them signing in the next two council meetings?
I wouldn't think so. I would think so. I would think that the chance would be towards, yeah, towards, towards the end of the year, if, if it occurs.
Right.
And that's if it occurs, because it's been going on for three quarters of a year, and it hasn't occurred. But other than two enrollment periods, it's not a problem, and it could occur. The, the other insurance broker for the other communities, thinking, and he's been in insurance for as long, or longer, that I've been doing what I've been doing, and he just is, and he's seen all of this happen, and he just believes that it's going to happen. But, you know...
As safe as the employees, I'm inclined to think we'll let them have it at least until the end of the year and see what happens, but that's my opinion.
And if we were to approve it, could we make sure that this comes back before us early, and that we have plenty of time to evaluate our options?
Absolutely.
The other thing is, we know it's good insurance. If we switch to somebody else, they may not have the same benefits that they would have through Blue Cross. And so if they end up, if they end up having to travel a little bit to get it, it still may be worth the benefit that they're going to receive from it to keep it.
Any other thoughts on that? Expressions are, either have a motion to the table, or a motion to move forward with it?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve, and a second report? All right. Roll call, please.
Coldiron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis. Worthen.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item thirteen. Approval of agreement between the City of Perry... Oh, sorry. I'm skipping ahead there.
Kind of good outside, like you...
We're really going to get out there early.
Right, item thirteen on there. There we go. All right. Item eleven. Sorry about that. Determined process for annual evaluation for city manager per employment contract dated July first, 2017. Apparently, it's that time of year.
That time of year.
For Mr. Pinnell.
You know, last time, we went through this CoreXcel, which I think you have information about that. When we were getting ready to print this, I think we, last year, we paid two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars for it, or something like that, and, and we had twenty-seven thirty participants for all this, the two-hundred-and-forty-nine. They've changed the assessment just a little bit, but this is the closest that I can find. I got this from the same place that I got the one that we did last year, which was the International City Management, City County Management Association. And this is part of the, the regular assessment program, whether you're a credential manager like I am, or just a new, a new manager. You can go through and use this at a reduced, at a reduced rate, actually. So this is the closest one I've got. And if you want to use this, it'd be fine, or, or some other program, whatever you would like to do.
So I believe in the past, you guys have had a committee to perform that evaluation with Larry. Derek, you were on it.
Just this last year was the first year we did the committee.
Right. So it was you, Jamie, and Kevin? How was that process?
I thought it was good.
Yeah.
I thought we had productive meetings. I liked how we started with the three-sixty assessment. We could start from there, and then just make personal...
Me personally, I liked it as well. I think, over the years, we haven't had a consistent process, and hopefully you agree, but I would like to keep some sort of consistency and use this tool as well that we have been using, and hopefully continue what we, what we started, so it's consistent and fair to you.
One other thing that I noticed, we didn't, the other evaluations that were done, it wasn't, there wasn't any documentation, or nothing documented. And I think this does a good job at that.
And I like the scope also. You get the opportunity as a council to participate. Those that, the department directors that are my direct reports, they get an opportunity to participate. Peers, other city managers, choose those, and they get to participate. And then there's some others in the other category that are city leaders, people involved in the community, that they get the chance to participate as well. So it's kind of really broad and analog, and everybody gets a report.
So we would use this, this report as well for, I've seen, so we do, you guys are going to help educate me here since I'm new at this. Do we do this, this same sort of evaluation for, for Bryce, and Meredith, and Russ, since they report to us?
No.
No? Okay. So this is just for the city manager?
It's per his contract.
Per his contract.
Does that pricing only get us the one?
How many, how many of these can we do?
Oh, it's unlimited.
So you just pay the four hundred, and it's unlimited?
Four hundred. Yep, that's it.
Oh.
Does the...
That's the way it was last year. Let me check again, but that was my understanding.
You said it changes a little bit. Does, will the numbers roll up? The information from last year, will we be able to roll that all into, see it together and separate?
I don't think that's the way it is.
Okay.
I think it's just for this last year. But I do think that we have, I certainly have a copy from last year. We happy to share that. I think most everybody that was on the council that did this last year, they have a copy too.
Sure.
And if you did not get a copy, let me know.
It'd be nice to at least be able to see the digital, because you can log in and see the digital results, too. I don't know if that...
I can look into that as well. If you have any other questions, we have to approve this back next time, if you'd like.
If we were to do this, would that only apply to you, or could we expand it to other members?
That's up to you. This one applies to me.
But we'd have to pay for each one separately?
I would think you would want to do that anyway, yeah.
Oh, so this wouldn't cover multiple?
No, that would just...
This is just yours, the four hundred?
So it's specific to your role?
I'm sorry?
It's specific to your role?
Yes, ma'am.
What was the unlimited, though?
Yeah, what's the unlimited?
The number of people that can respond.
We've got nine here. I've got fifteen direct reports. Then there, there's other city managers that are asked to participate. So I think we had twenty-seven, twenty-eight last time? Oh, for two-hundred-and-twenty-nine, I thought it was a great deal. And I liked it because it was a professional report. You know, it was well done.
As part of that process, if we did the committee again, would you two want to remain on that, since you guys did his last year, and then add someone else, or did the three work?
I'm open to that, yeah.
Okay.
As long as everyone else agrees.
Right. Was there someone that would like to be on that committee?
Someone.
Sammy? Okay.
And let me just explain the process. We enroll with this. I give them some names of my peers and those others that are not participating and with the organization. Christie comes up with, with your email address, and then all the direct reports. And once that is submitted to CoreXcel, I'm out of it. I don't, I don't call you up and say, "Hey, where's your, you haven't filled your report out. Come on, let's go." You know, I'm all out of it until the end report, which I like.
Do we have to nominate and vote to put her on the committee? What's how to vote a committee?
Well, you can. I mean, that's the purpose of this. Yeah, it's actually to determine the process, so you're going to do a committee process, appoint the folks, and move forward.
I'm going to nominate Sammy, Derek, and Kevin as committee members for the evaluation process for the city manager.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Sounds pretty good, yeah. We have a motion.
Before, are we doing that for July first? Is that...
His contract was dated July first, 2017. Was there, I suppose the committee can decide when to do that?
Well, the CoreXcel happens before we even...
Right.
So that's why I was wondering, are we going to do that immediately, or what's the plan? I was just asking.
Yeah, timeframe would be nice.
Time flies, so I'd like to get it done immediately, as soon as possible.
Okay.
Did someone repeat her motion? I did not hear it.
You got it, Christie?
Yes. She has nominated Sammy Davis, Derek Coldiron, and Kevin Bond to serve on the committee, as they did last year, adding Sammy, for the, to bring the results to Larry.
So I've been comfortable with that, not being on the council long enough to...
She just volunteered.
She volunteered.
Yes, I volunteered.
And we will use Core, CoreXcel, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's not part of my thing.
And will we have a meeting prior to us delivering that as a whole? That's what we did last year. It's reasonable. Just to get the whole council's thoughts that we deliver...
Executive session.
Yep, that we deliver.
I want to say something, and this is being bold, and it's not easy, Sammy, and I'm sorry. But a lot of the things that I get from the public is that there's so many ditch fish people. But a lot of the things that I get from the public is that there's so many ditch which people, you know, this is ditch which, this is ditch which, I don't know where you work, do you know? But it's like, they want to see a more cross part of the community. And I, I'm just saying that, throwing it out, because I've been told that more than once. And it's certainly not because I want to be on the committee. Uh, cause, you know, I just, I, but I, I do feel like that it needs to be somebody that has worked with Larry, knows Larry, and been in process. Instead of someone, um, who is new, and probably get feedback from other people, rather than knowing from experiments. And, and Sammy, I don't even know you, so I'm not.
That's fine.
Uh, and, and I'm sorry, but I just feel like I had to say that.
Okay.
What you do is, I just wanted to, but.
Right.
I just need you clear the air with that.
Right, and part of this process with this, um, this program is that it pulls in multiple people and to be a part of that, correct?
Yes. So, yeah, to clarify what I think you're getting at, is, is this CoreXcel will happen, and it will give us a whole bunch of data.
Right.
And that's where I was getting ready to ask, is that we all, all meet as a council in executive session, discuss that data.
Right.
And as a whole, the whole council sends us with the message, we're not, we're not coming up with the message, the whole council is.
Right.
And then delivering that to Larry and having follow-up meetings to continue the growth with, whatever you want to call that. At this juncture, we had a motion and a second though, right?
Yes, we do, yeah.
So, unless.
Unless someone else wants to do it. That's only fine if I'm out there.
You ready, Christie?
I'm ready.
All right, roll call.
Coldair.
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes. Okay. Now on to item twelve, discussion of dates for strategic planning session prior to budget consideration. It's one of the things that I would like to do, especially is to have a strategic planning session with the council. Ideally, I would like to, to break this up into two sessions. The first session, we have the city council involved. If we have to go into executive session, then we can do that at that meeting. But I would like the council to come together and be able to, to discuss, um, what our vision is for the city. And then we can also discuss, um, discuss our, our city administration as well. Um, you know, what we would like to, the expectations that we have from them as we come, come together on that vision for the city. And then in that second session, be able to invite our city administration into that, and we can then deliver that direction to them. And so with that, what are, what are your thoughts?
I will be gone from the nineteenth through the twenty-sixth.
That's pretty much when I'll be going.
So anything else, I'm pretty much up until then.
Okay. And around the nineteenth, that weekend, we've got graduation here for the high school as well, so some folks might be busy with that.
I go for school Tuesday and Thursday nights for the whole district are really packed for the next three weeks. Those nights usually gonna be bad.
So are we talking full days, half day, during the day, after evening, what, what timeframe are we talking?
What works best for you guys? I know a lot of you, you know, do work at ditch which and have to work during the day. Are weekday, week, weekday evenings going to work better for you, weekends?
Weekday evenings are better for me.
Weekday evenings are better.
Right. After graduation, I can do it anytime, basically.
Okay, after graduation, you're right. Right. And ideally, if we can do this before, before we pass the budget, I think that would be good as well.
You said till the twenty-sixth?
Till the twenty-sixth, yeah.
Of course, the budget doesn't have to be passed till June twenty-third.
Okay.
So, just to give you perspective.
Initial draft needs to be given by June first.
Who are you?
Public hearing by the fifteenth.
Right.
Public hearing when?
By the fifteenth.
By the fifteenth.
June fifteenth.
June fifteenth.
So our regular meetings are the.
Oh, I work two days a week, and it's Monday and Friday.
Too pretty busy. So since we have school up until the nineteenth, Curtis will be gone until the twenty-sixth, how does the end of May?
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. So we have council meeting on the fifteenth. We do not have council meeting on the twenty-ninth.
No, we do not. That's Memorial Day.
Oh, that is Memorial Day, right. So how's that Tuesday, Wednesday?
I say thirty, thirtieth or thirty-first?
Mm-hmm.
I can't do the Tuesday, the thirtieth, in the middle of the day.
How about the evening?
That should be good.
When's that, Tuesday?
Tuesday, the thirtieth? Tuesday evening?
I believe if we say evening, five, five-thirty, six, six-thirty.
I'll be free after five.
Yeah, when does everybody get off working, after five? It's about five-thirty?
After nine. I, I own my own business, so.
Right.
I work nonstop.
Yeah.
Kind of like you.
Yeah, same for me.
I think it was Jamie's responsibility previously, but what about dinner, if we do an evening?
Yeah, yeah. We'll have dinner.
Yeah, Sammy, you've got to pick up on that. She was the, always trying to plan dinner for everybody.
And when we meet here, will we meet at City Hall?
Yeah, we could probably talk to Melanie and family, maybe Mitch over, or meet over at the Heritage Center. And have dinner brought in over there.
You, you've done the planning deals before, where did you all, where did you meet?
We've used here, as we've used the hotels, um. Typically, those were during the day also.
At least if we get the date, we can, I can work towards getting the place after that. But if Tuesday, the thirtieth, five-thirty works for everybody, I'll get us a spot. And as far as that second session goes, we can discuss that in that meeting as well, and take a look at everybody's schedule moving forward.
You said five-thirty?
Five-thirty, Tuesday, the thirtieth. And so this will be an open meeting, and then if we do need to go into an executive session with that, then we can do that at that time.
Oh. Not good one, I thought it was. Okay, I'm gonna have a meeting some, on Sunday somewhere that is, is not on May thirtieth.
So with that, we'll go on to item thirteen. Consider approval of agreement with Exchange Bank for advertising at BMAC.
I believe in January, uh, the council set out the specs that they'd like to see for advertisers at BMAC. We actually have, today, we have, uh, we have one field, banners and scoreboard taken. By exchange, that would be, uh, field one. And at your next meeting, we're putting together the contract, same contract, under your specifications for field two. It pays twenty-five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars per year. Uh, because we're a little late this year, uh, they're kind of get, gonna kind of get a portion of this year. Well, they're gonna make their first five thousand dollar payment on, before August first. And then for the next five years. So we've got this one, uh, at this meeting, and then we have another one at the next meeting. I don't know, Larry, has, uh, has he spoken to some, uh, other folks, other than the two banks? Uh, do we have?
Nothing, uh, he hasn't came back to me with anything else yet.
Anything yet, yeah.
But he was going to several.
Yeah, so, so there will be other folks spoken to, and we're hoping to get all four fields sold under the specifications. The, these are done under the specs that, that the council requested.
That's just one per field, right?
Yeah, it, yeah, uh, Exchange is getting field one, uh, the next one will be getting field two, and then we've got field three and four open.
That included the backstop scoreboard?
Yes. It's the naming of the field, the scoreboard, and two banners.
That's for five years?
Yes.
Right.
Five thousand per year. This particular agreement, as you can see, is signed and already approved and ready to go, all it means is you were.
Right.
Put the motion to approve it.
BMAC motion, we approve the agreement with Exchange Bank for advertising to BMAC.
Second.
Okay. Good motion and second. Roll call, please.
Coldair.
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes. All right, item fourteen, any new business? Seeing none. You have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call, please.
Coldair.
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes. Okay. Let you get a big switch over there. Ready, all right. So let's call, meaning to order for the regular meeting in Perry Municipal Authority Meeting, May first, twenty twenty-three. We have a roll call, please.
Coldair.
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Coffee?
Here.
White?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Worthy?
Here. Thank you, I declare a quorum. Moving on to item one, consent agenda. Item A, receiving and approving minutes of regular BMA meeting, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Coldair.
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes. Okay. Item two, presentation by Oklahoma Municipal Power Authority regarding OMPA Services Maintenance Program. Jim, you're welcome.
Morning, or good afternoon.
Morning.
Good night, good evening, yeah. Uh, it's been a long day. Um, so a while back, we gave you guys the presentation, I don't know who all was here on the council, but, um, uh, myself and Jim are gonna kind of tag-team this. But we have since revised the agreement, kind of lowered some of the costs, and we're gonna, we're gonna walk you through this new line crew program that we have. I don't know if, does he have the slides?
He does.
The slideshow, okay, perfect, okay, perfect.
Does that mean it's the little?
Yeah, that's, he's trying to read the little tiny ones. So, um, for those of you that weren't here, we're gonna, we're not gonna read through all the testimonials at the end, we'll let you guys read through those on your own time as you want to. But there's, there's no decision to be made tonight, this is just a presentation by us on this program. So a little bit of background on it. Um, back in twenty fifteen, OMPA was approached by several of our Northwest Oklahoma cities and towns. They were having difficulty hiring and maintaining and retaining linemen. Uh, because the wages that the OGNEs or the PSOs and the co-ops pay, cities and municipalities are not able to competitively compete with that. Uh, to keep and maintain those line markers. Also, in Western Oklahoma, the oil field was still in quite a few of them, because they have their own line workers. So, um, several of our cities were down to either zero or one person running the entire city system. Or had, you know, just barely been able to keep anybody employed. So we, um, we started this program in twenty fifteen with a two-person crew out of Fairview, Oklahoma. And, uh, eventually, we moved out to a four-person crew in Fairview, uh, due to the growing interest. And in twenty twenty-one, we added a second line crew, which is based out of Marlow, Oklahoma, at one of our facilities there. Uh, currently, we have sixteen of our, uh, forty-two cities are signed up underneath this program. Uh, the reason why we're talking to you all, and we're also gonna be talking to other cities in the north as well that we've been meeting with. There's some interest from this side of the state, because a lot of cities and towns are having the same difficulty of keeping and maintaining qualified line markers. You can't, sometimes you can't compete against some of the big boys. So, um, how the structure would work, um, so currently, when we first talked to you, we were gonna look at establishing a third line crew in the north part of the state. Well, we didn't have enough kind of buy-in from some of the cities in this area to kind of fore, forego that. So what we're looking at doing is expanding the current line crews we have. So the Fairview one adding possibly more folks, and then the Marlow one adding some additional folks as well. And I know, um, Jim has, they're, uh, they've actually already ordered the trucks for additional workers because of supply chain issues. Bucket trucks are almost, what, a year and a half out to.
We've already got, yeah, we've already got an additional big bucket truck, this Corboon truck, which is a smaller truck. Hopefully get that next month or two, and then we got a digger truck on order that's due next January.
Um, so basically, the idea would be, until we have enough interest in this part of the state, that if Perry, because you guys were actually one of the cities that approved and signed a contract. If Perry wants to go ahead and move forward with this, we would be able to, we still have enough, we could be able to service you starting July one. Um, so that we would serve you out of our Fairview office. Uh, there, there has been some talk, uh, we are looking around at possibly areas closer to here as well for our shop out, out of Fairview. So, uh, that is something that's being investigated. Uh, you guys have, uh, I've sent Larry a copy of the contract, but I'm just gonna go over some highlights of it. Um, it would be a five-year contract with a one-year renewal. Um, as a participant of the program, uh, Jim has a district, well, he actually has two now. So there's two distribution engineers that OMPA has on staff, and so as part of the program, you get what's called a five-year maintenance plan done for free. So basically, what that entails is Jim's, the distribution lineman, or engineer, distribution engineer, will walk your entire system. Identify areas where you need to improve your system, where you've got line loss, or, um, if you've got a new development that's coming into town, that's something we can take into effect. I don't know if you want to talk more about his five-year plans, or I missed something? Okay, okay, I didn't know if I missed anything.
Sounds like there's a note.
Yeah.
Well, no, 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 I mean, the whole purpose of the plan is to give you an idea of what needs to be done, the cost of it. And then we break it down on a per year basis, but that just allows you the ability to review that and to budget accordingly, year by year basis, for what you want to do.
And a part of this agreement, it's what's different from the last one that we showed you guys, um, is there's a fixed fee that would be associated with the contract. The last one we presented on kind of changed, fluctuated. Um, so we've actually went back to the drawing board, and we're gonna move all of our line crew cities on this contract. We've already started sending out cancellation letters to the ones currently in San Pay moved to this contract. Um, the idea of the program is for it to be revenue neutral, we don't want to make any money off of this. You, you guys are our members, you already pay for us, this is a service we're doing for you. So we're trying to keep it revenue neutral to where no one's subsidizing, because currently, the current way of structure, we are over-subsidizing. The cities that are not participating are subsidizing the program, basically. So the minimum buy-in would be around fifteen thousand dollars a year. Now, the, the former contract you guys signed, Perry, was gonna be paying well over six years. Um, the other contribution amount, there is a contribution amount where it kicks in a two percent, uh, uh, rate break, which is fifty grand a year. So that is the, there's commitment levels. So you guys can look at your budget, you can come up with an idea of, hey, maybe we start the program this year, and we start at fifty. Or we have some cities that start at seventy-five, we have some that do even more. Uh, it just depends on the. It just depends on the work that you feel like your system needs. There is a chance for you, even though it's a five-year contract, each year, you, your city staff or myself, I'll come up to a council meeting, but you can increase that amount. So if you start out at first and say, hey, we're gonna put in X amount of dollars, then you notice you're spending more than, than what you're actually contributing, then you have a chance each year to come back and go, hey, well, we're actually using the program more than we thought we would, so we're gonna increase our commitment amount. So that is something you can and have the ability to do. The agreement highlights, so there's a rate sheet in there, this is currently the rates that are gonna be in the contract. So there's a service charge for planned work, a different charge for unplanned work. Labor and equipment charges will be billed, starting when the crew arrives at the job site and stops when they leave the job site. So even though they might be driving from Fairview, Oklahoma, the clock doesn't start until they get on site here in Perry. So you're not paying like contractor wages, sometimes, that's how those work. By March 1st of every year, we will review and adjust the equipment and labor rates because we, we actually did have to do a big increase here recently because of inflation, and we were very well below, we actually hire contractors ourselves, so we know that these are well below what you would pay a contractor as far as these wages go. So some of the highlights again I'll go over is, you guys are basically, so if you sign up for the program, you're required to maintain the materials, so if our guys are coming out to do a job or a new addition, you have to have the poles, the wires, transformers, everything ready to go for the work. Any materials that we supply, because we do keep some spare poles here and there.
Well, they are just little incidentals, et cetera.
So if we have to supply any of the materials, we'll charge you for them plus 10%. We will not initiate a program or project until all the materials are on site. And then basically, all, all planned work is performed by our crews, but we're the safety stop. Like, so since we're gonna be here, you know, we're the ones in charge of the safety, so if we see something, I'd say we're the ones who have the do not stop work call. So all planned work will be a minimum of four hours, so you don't wanna come, you still have to maintain someone on staff, like Brian back here, my buddy, who can go flip a fuse or switch, or, you know, something. If there's a squirrel that gets in the line, you don't wanna pay these guys clear for, you know, for four hours of work just because of a squirrel outage. So you do have to have one person on staff that, that can maintain the system, but we will come and do the major works for you. And I'm kind of jumping ahead, but yeah, so one area we did get approached, just some of our cities that only have one person, approached us and said, well, hey, Bob has never taken, hasn't taken a vacation in two years, and, because he's the only one here, he's the only guy we have. So there is a caveat built into this contract to where if Bob wants to go on a fishing trip with his buddies, you can call us up, but obviously, there'll be fees and stuff associated in the contract. And I do wanna explain further, as part of you paying in that monthly, like that fee each year, all that gets billed directly to that fee, so it all starts getting deducted, like that rate sheet, and if Bob goes on vacation and our guys show up, that all gets taken away from your 50 grand. So we do update periodically, I think Alex does it quarterly, on what your remaining balance is and how much work that would get you. So we do keep you updated on, here's, here's how much you got in your bank, here's how much is in your account, and here's how much work you can get done. So if Brian wanted to go on vacation, because I think you're the only guy now, aren't you?
No, I've got two.
Okay, you got two, okay.
One line.
So I guess you can take a vacation still, okay.
That's relative.
But, but it's built in there for those cities that, that don't have those, that only have one person, because Yale's another town we're talking to, and they only have one, one person, so. If the crew is not available to perform any of the work, you can also call Mutual Aid, which I'm the contact person for that as well. I will say, under this contract, in the way the line crew program works, if there's an ice storm, and say this area of the state gets hit, line crew cities get first precedence. So if there's a huge outage in Perry, and there's one in Blackwell, but Blackwell's not on the line crew program, they're coming here first, that's where they go, is to the participating members who have been impacted by a storm. If you get hit by a storm, you guys take first precedence. And then once all those repairs are made, we release them to, if other folks need them, and that's fine. So basically, I'll go over some reliability numbers. I'm not gonna go through all these testimonials, but it's, it's actually been one of our fastest-growing, most popular programs. So based on available data that our engineering group was able to come up with, within two years of Winoka using the field services program, their customer outages decreased on average of 259,000 customer minutes a year. I, I don't have to tell you, outages and all that cost you money because your meters are not spinning. So this resulted in an avoided loss of revenue in the amount of $28,500 annually to the city of Winoka. So it, it is a good program, it's been a proven program, it's very popular. We have had some cities decrease their amounts because we have improved their systems so well that they may not need to use us as much. I don't know if you wanna talk about some of our guys and the employment process, like our qualifications and?
Yeah, all our German linemen are Department of Labor certified. In fact, OMPA has our apprenticeship program certified through the Department of Labor, which is the gold standard. We also are, I'll say, certified through the Veterans Administration. So we actually have one former Marine that's going through the MISO line program, and he also seeking benefits through the VA to help him out as well. So we've already got that done, done as well. So we've got a good group, we've got three linemen right now, three journeyman linemen. We have, I think, one or two more that's gonna journey out this year on that. We've been, knock on wood, very fortunate, we've got a good group of, of linemen there that we haven't had anybody leave in the last two years. So, and we're, you know, we're gonna have to look at bumping up their pay again because, you know, and then OGNE and others, they're, they're just keep raising the rates on there. It's, it's a, if you know anybody that wants to make six-figure money, come out of high school, tell them.
That's a good career for you, because we need lots of them.
Yes, yes, we do. So we've, we've done, we've got a great, great two crews, they're great personnel, they work very well together. Their whole idea, their whole scope is when they get on the job, is to get things done, you know.
I'll attest to that.
There you go.
That's a very good group, wonderful bunch of guys.
Which, even though you're not under a contract, you know, any of our cities, they can use us, but it's obviously a premium rates, that's just not included in the contract. But the next steps would be, so we've done this presentation, the next step for you guys would be to decide if this is something you want to do and you wanna join, and myself or Jim can come back when you, when you are going over the contract. Determine your annual contribution level, budget-wise, what you think you could give to the program, and then you execute the contract and it becomes active July 1. So we base it, we base it on a city's fiscal year, so that way, if you're in the budget process, you know ahead of time, hey, we might wanna join this program, maybe let's start out at 50 or 30. I mean, some people, it's just different, it's all over the place depending on the size of the city.
Is it a use it or lose it type of thing? Like if we sign up to save $50,000, if we don't spend that much, do we not?
No, we let it roll over to the next year, but we also try to encourage you, because that's what the program's for. We do have some cities that they sit on their money until they have a huge, like outage event, and, but we encourage them that you wouldn't have these huge outages if you'd use the program and get your system kind of built up pretty robust when these weather events come through. So we try to encourage folks, that's what we're here for, that's the whole purpose of the program, is to use it. And as part of that five-year plan as well, our line crews get copies of that five-year plan, and they'll work with Brian and his guys on what are your, what are the city's priorities? Which jobs are your priorities? There, there might be a new addition that's coming in that's one of your priorities. We've had one city that they were getting a new loves, and that was a priority project for them. And so it just can be all over the board, but yeah, we let it roll over, but we, we encourage you to use it, but we're not gonna let you lose it, you know.
And then, and the other hand, if you go over, you just?
You just pay, and we basically invoice, in the contract, there's, there's, you can choose the which way you wanna be billed, it's either quarterly billing or once a year. We do have some cities that just wanna pay the big ones some up at the front, but we typically, the majority of them are on quarterly billing. But even if you go over, it's not 50 and you're cut off, no. You, we have a lot of cities that go over their allotted amounts, and we just end up billing them for that.
So the minimum commitment starts at $15,000?
$15,000.
And then we just choose whatever it may be?
You can choose whatever you think budget-wise you can get. That $50,000 commitment level does get you that 2% discount on the rates. Because we're trying to encourage people to go in sometimes at a higher rate because, you know, especially the larger cities that are in the program, that have more work and stuff, so.
You know, our plan is to go not only here, but several of the cities that we spoke to in the north, or central Oklahoma, engage their interest, see what they, if they would like to join up. Once we figure out how many people actually are gonna, additional cities sign up, and what dollar levels, that's really gonna help dictate how many personnel we can add to, to both crews. So we don't know what that number is just yet, so we're still gonna wait and see on that.
And this, again, there's nothing to vote on tonight, this is just an informational presentation. I know Larry wanted us to come back and give it, because we know you've got some new folks that are on the council and new mayor, and so, and plus, it's a new contract as well, and it's not as much sticker shock, because we did hear some, from some, oh, that's a sticker shock. So we went back to the drawing board and figured out, okay, if we put everybody on this new contract, which some of our cities in the Northwest that were our first ones, which Mr. Kennedy's their attorney, they've actually already passed some of their new contracts, and one of them's passing it tonight to, to go ahead and renew. So, yeah, we're moving everybody over to the same contract, and be good. I think that's all I got, any other questions?
Great, thank you.
And I'm sure we'll be back at a later date, maybe. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Brian, Brian, since you're here, do you have any thoughts or input on that?
We need all help we can get. Traditionally, we've tried over the years to go, you know, $30,000 to $50,000 just for pole change outs every year, and that's something that we, we put on, you know, capital out late every year. Basically, we've spent that much money every year and not had OMPA come help, you know. So this is almost just like, it's a guaranteed, we're gonna get our bang for our buck out of that deal, yeah.
Great.
And we've got several projects, but most of what we run into is just purely the routine maintenance of the pole change outs, you know, 30 to 50 a year, and that, you know, $30,000 to $50,000 will usually cover that. But now that we've got an outlet that we can schedule, hey, you're coming this week, this week's free, these boys, they, they do a lot of work in a short amount of time, I mean, it's a, you get your money's worth out of them, so.
Right.
That's, that's my opinion on it, yeah.
Right.
If we had a five-man crew like we did, I, I wouldn't entertain it quite as much. And it's taken, I can, I can see why other cities are reticent to, to get on it, because that is, you kind of have a feeling of letting go of your system. But I realize, in fact, I mean, we have to do something. You know, if you can't retain the help, or you can't hire the help, you've gotta get it where you can get it. And these guys are, they're trustworthy, I know a lot of them, and, yeah, I, I don't hesitate to put them out on our system and have them do safe work at all, so, I think it's a wonderful thing.
Right, and that retaining journeyman's been difficult for you.
Right, yeah.
So this would help, and this would probably help you build, take on other projects.
Oh, 100%, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, going right for a German's score of $50 an hour today. Do you foresee them doing more of the maintenance? I think that's kind of what you were saying, and you guys doing more of the projects, or how do you see that working out?
It's, it's, like, right now, we need, we need maintenance. I don't mean streetlight maintenance and things like that, we need, we need pole change outs, we need things that, that like, you know, there's three of us, it's hard to set up and, and deal with, as they talked about, oh, got squirrel outage, whoo, had somebody hit a pole here. You know, it's hard to get on in projects that you can't just pull off of in the middle of the day. Yeah, because, I mean, it's possible you could take all day to change one pole, it's just relative on, you know, what it is. So, yeah, that's, that's the projects initially that I would probably put them on. Of course, and the harder, the harder pole, of course, that's, that's the ones they're gonna get.
That's our specialty, is to judge the pole.
Here's the thing with that crew, that's what they like, honestly. They like that challenge that you give to them. We do have a project coming up, and I'm scheduling with Alex now. We're gonna use them, contractor not, to do some work coming out of substations, so. Get on contract, it's always cheaper, so.
What about things like, where in your purview is up north, there, we, we took the underground, put it on poles in the past, and we're supposed to go back at some point?
Right, and that's possible, that's something that, yeah, we can look at, yeah. Right now, we need to get our, our infrastructure back up snuff, and then, once we get that, then let's worry about the things that trickle down from that, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. So if there's nothing else to add on to that, we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
For them.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's call the next meeting to order, regular meeting for the Perry Facilities Authority, May 1st, 2023. Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
White.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
For them.
Here. I declare quorum. Item one, the consent agenda. Item A, receiving and approving minutes of regular PFA meeting on April 17th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown. Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
For them.
Yes. And finally, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown. Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
For them.
Yes.